We'll reconvene and it's one twenty P M. The special media manager, county commissioner support on the. Started making those.
Live feed on good.
Yeah, do uh July the seventh. Oh, excuse me, August the seventh. Should be. And uh show that all members of the court are present in the court. And I was making some notes on some of the, a few of the other requests that we hadn't covered yet. Uh, one of them was the senior citizen vehicle. Is it all right if I kinda see what a price would be? I, I did come up about twenty-six thousand and then try to talk to the other judges and said, all right, y'all will see. We might help mills on wheels with that as a one-time experience.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. And we may, we may not can do it.
Right.
You know, we already give them some and we raised that last year's. Okay, and she knows that. Okay, and then uh Kathy had put in for make sure the twenty thousand for crossroads. Uh, for indigent healthcare was there and uh that is in the budget, so we don't have to address that.
Was it in there last time?
Yeah, it was there.
I thought so.
I believe it was in there last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
And so we talked about jail repairs yesterday. And uh there's a request in the security funds.
Judge, um Judge Davis, um he, I think, I believe he said he had a docket that starts at one thirty.
Oh, okay. Well, you're up first then. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I didn't have anything in writing. Yes, sir.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate you having me. I'm just gonna take about five minutes real quick. I wanted to speak about our district court budget and one issue that I would like you all to consider. If you recall, it was a little over, probably going on about three years ago, I think, Megan, we came to you. Uh, with the need for a second district coordinator in our office. And we talked about how one person was expected to conduct the business of four district judges with our hectic schedules and whatnot. And it's customary, like in Henderson County, for example, for each district judge to have one coordinator. Cherokee County, we each have our own coordinator. We're not asking for that today, so Excel, I'm not asking for like a, a new position to be created, but what I do. I wanna start by doing is one, commend the staff that we do have in our office. We have Maria Hallman, she's hired as our indigent coordinator. We have Misty Cross, she's our senior court coordinator. And we have Amber Petrie, who is our new hire. And they're doing a fan- a fantastic job. And they share us, the way it's broke down now. Amber uh manages my docket as well as Judge Ward's docket. And then Misty Cross, she manages Judge Fletcher's docket as well as Judge Catherine's docket. And what I wanted to consider and what we'd like to do as judges. Our annual district judge meeting is this Friday afternoon. And what we would like the court to consider in our budget, would you approve a small raise for each of these individuals? And I would say small, I mean a minimal amount, but in the increment of five thousand each. And if I may approach, I have a chart that my beloved auditor helped me.
Yes, sir.
Just this out for current salaries that they have.
So as it stands right now, the lower salary, that would be Maria Hallman. She makes the forty-six thousand dollar figure currently in the budget for her. We're asking for an elevation of fifty-one thousand and change. And then the next one up would be Amber Petrie, uh our most recent hire. She's at fifty-one at the coordinator position. Uh, we're asking for hers to be bumped up to fifty-six. And I apologize, I'm working without my readers, so if I butcher a number, that's on me. And then Misty Cross is currently at fifty-two. We'd ask the court to consider a fifty-seven as well. So that's where we're at with this. We're lucky to have the team in place that we have. We wanna keep this team in place. Um, with what they get, um, and what they have to deal with and the pressures of that. This is a reward we can give them and it's without a necessity of creating another coordinator position, which I do think would be justified.
We had two, how do we have three now?
She's a, Maria Hallman, the final one, she's the indigent coordinator.
Okay.
And she backs up the other two right now. She's actually trained as a district coordinator. So in theory, one day when one retires or moves on, she, you know, would be able to apply for that and have like a seamless transition at least. And, and nothing else in the interim until, you know, retire somebody else. So we all work to be interchangeable in that office. It's not something, I know a lot of departments would like increased raises for their employees. It's not something I bring lightly to you, but I think it is more than justified with what we're able to do. You see the numbers that we're kicking out, you write the checks for the attorney's fees. We're moving cases left and right and it takes a great staff for us to be able to do that. Uh, I would like to reward them with this. Even if you don't entertain the full amount, anything you'd be willing to do would mean a lot to us and make a great statement as well, uh, for support of them. But without these coordinators helping us manage the cases. And when I say this, each one of us has a probably a couple hundred cases per docket. That's not, you know, to be able to track that, manage that, what schedules due, which ones are due for trial, who's been in. Sheriff Flores is jail the longest, who can we get out, who has medical issues, et cetera. That's just per docket. So they manage two of those types of dockets per one of us. You know, per judge, I mean, they each have two judges, is what I'm trying to, trying to say with that. So without further ado, I said it'd only take about five minutes or so of your time. I'll entertain any questions or any concerns.
So you know what we've done this morning, if you asked her. We've given a twelve hundred across the board for everybody. And then we did an ARPA, and that will be for next year's budget. But the court unanimously did an ARPA here coming, again, this year of a thousand dollars for all the employees. So they will, they're included in there. So, I mean, we're gonna pay that in the beginning payroll of December.
Okay.
So that's kinda what we've done at this point.
I do appreciate that. And Judge, if, look, still considering what I brought up, if there's anything else the court would be willing to entertain, it would be greatly appreciated.
Understood.
But I, I do appreciate that. I've been on the bench all morning. I haven't heard about anything that's been going on, so.
Well, we've, we've been at it for several hours.
No, I, I imagine you have.
Anyway.
Well, thank you for your time. If there are no other questions?
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Megan, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, dude.
And we did talk about indigent defense costs and how that's elevated and that the courts have been working in all, all of the courts. All of the district judges in the county, in the county court of office.
And to put it in perspective, you know, we house and feed the inmates each day in addition to their health issues. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. But the money we put out on the front end with the increased attorney's fees and the frequency of the cases, it saves you in the long run. That's where your ROI comes back on that, is when we move the cases quicker, we get the pleas, we get, we get it all going and we're trying, trying as many cases as we can. Um, and it's across the counties. I mean, it, it, this is a, it's not just Anderson County that deals with the increased expenses of the running the jail, of running the attorney's fees program. It's all my counties. I just finished, I won't go into it, I just finished an eleven-day trial in Leon County. That man had been in jail for over a year and it was a matter of just holding everyone's feet to the fire to get it heard. Uh, with that, prior to that in Cherokee County, had a double homicide, you know, putting the feet to the fire on that one. He'd been in jail for about a year. So the quicker, with the resources that we have in place, we can get to these quicker and it will save you money in the long run. So I know there might be sticker shock with some of the bills. Um, but with that, what you're getting is a, a faster resolution of a matter versus somebody waiting and waiting and waiting to have their, their case heard, so. All right.
Understand.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
So I think the only two issues, I think we've talked about the jail repairs budget and uh the security service. And let me ask, let me ask Sheriff, I was looking at the budget earlier. And again, we got a contingency fund. But if we, if, if you wanna make sure that it's available, you don't have, in other words, you want your repair budget more. Okay. Uh, we could take like we've done in one of the others, just move some of the gas and oil down to that. And we can always do budget amendments from contingency if we need to.
We moved some gas over.
Yeah, it was a hundred, it was two hundred thousand, we moved ten thousand down to uniforms. And then that's about, and then we increased, I think, your other or something like that, we increased it. So I'm, I'm just suggesting a way to not increase the budget overall. But to make sure you got available funds and repairs where you don't have to come get a budget amendment every time you, you need something. Because there are repairs to the jail, just like there are to the courthouse. So, uh, and any of the big ticket items like air conditioners, boilers, that can come out and get a capital outlay. I estimate we can just do that out of permanent improvement or capital outlay. Cause I don't think you can do repairs for twenty thousand for an air conditioner unit.
Well, frankly, if we're consistent about that, that'll help significantly. Just uh making sure that the things that are the big ticket items that are, that are single item uh purchases, not parts of an item repaired. Then they consistently come out of capital outlay. I think that'd help the building repair budgets some. But frankly, Judge, I think building repair is still gonna have to go up. Uh, I mean significantly more than it is simply because there's so many more things breaking than there have been in the last few years. Plus, we have a really good maintenance man that is addressing those things as they break instead of letting them linger on and cause more damage.
And, and that's what I'm saying, if we move, you've got, still got a hundred and ninety in gas and oil. It was, you used a hundred and eighteen thousand last year. It was less than a hundred thousand the two years before. And, and I understand if staff goes up and you, you have to start, then we can take contingency and we can address it then, okay?
Well.
Somewhere else in the budget. I'm just trying to keep the overall budget going up.
And I couldn't really go on with that.
So we can.
Like I said, if we get a commitment that, I'm sure Sheriff feels the same way as I do, as long as we get a commitment that, you know, you guys will help address it out of contingency. You know, if we have a shortfall, then, you know, there, I don't think we'd be in disagreement with that.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think this year we've done a lot of those things. And we did the twenty, almost twenty thousand dollars on the air conditioner. We did the uh ovens, that was fourteen thousand. Another nine thousand on one other item, I can't, was that an air conditioner or smaller? So, so we've been doing that either out of capital outlay or out of permanent program. I don't see a problem with it. I would rather deal with those bigger ticket items out of those two budgets if we can. Uh, what if we move twenty thousand out of gas and oil down there to repairs?
Judge, I don't think that, that actually does anything. If we've got money, extra money in gas and oil, we can do it as a budget amendment along and along as we go.
Well, I know, I just wanted you to not have.
I mean, just doing it on the front end really doesn't make any difference.
I just didn't want you to have to do, come get a budget amendment to move the money within line and we can just go ahead and put it there.
Uh, most of this stuff is an emergency purchase anyway, Judge, so it's already ordered by the time uh we bring it to the court, so.
You wanna just leave it there then?
Yeah, just leave it there.
Okay.
Unless you want something different.
Those type of things have to be bought.
Sure.
They're, they're worth.
Okay. All right. What is?
So we're not ma- making any changes?
We're uh.
So we're not making any changes?
I, I've gone through and that's, that's all the requests that I, that I found.
So right now, leaving it the way it is?
Okay, there was something you talked about earlier. It's a versus when we were talking about some of those. And, and, and Mr. Chet, and I realized that you were talking about something new and we were still on another one.
Oh, that was with um Roden Bridge Three principal interest.
Okay, did we address that?
No.
On what?
Roden Bridge Three principal interest on the loan. Roden Bridge Three, huh?
Do you wanna just deal with that while I'm thinking about it?
Sure.
What do we need to do?
Uh, just approve. Moving.
What page do you want?
It's gonna be on page fifty-seven.
Principal of interest.
That's just a line out and movement?
Yes, within the budget.
Okay.
Does it consist of?
It's just moving uh two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars from principal, from interest to principal payment.
From interest.
Where you at?
On page fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
On the bottom, the, at the bottom.
Two thousand.
Page number on the bottom.
Fifty-seven.
I'm there.
Fifty-seven and.
Okay, principal payments.
Yeah, your interest payments, four thousand seven forty-four. Yeah, and she wants to move two thousand up to the thirty-four eight seventy-six, right?
Yes.
Is that, is that what it'll take to pay the principal? And equipment leased about that, they got leased there.
I didn't change it.
I'm lost.
It's just a principal payment and interest payment.
I'm pretty clear.
Okay.
Cause I am, I wanna make sure we go the right direction.
She said you, you needed two thousand.
What are we coming out of, interest payments?
It's coming out of interest payments and going to principal payment.
Okay, so one line of.
Uh, two thousand, she said.
Two thousand?
Two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, okay.
Do you have stuff leased?
So is everybody okay?
No, it's a.
I don't know what you're talking about.
No, it's a, it's a refi- it's a refinance on a motor grader.
Okay.
Or a wheel loader.
Two.
Wheel loader.
Wheel loader.
Just moving.
As we move on.
Just one line up.
Added it to the sum.
This is a refinance one you have with Sheldon.
Yeah, it's your wheel loader.
No, it's no, okay, you just had said nothing to me about it, I didn't know.
Refinance on your wheel loader.
Is that okay?
Me, yes, sir.
So let's just move, let's just make that change, okay?
Okay.
We don't have to have a motion on that.
Okay.
Okay. Now, go to, let me find. To uh maintenance. Courthouse maintenance.
The, you want, you want with the salary?
Yeah, it's courthouse maintenance. Got it, Judge? Courthouse maintenance, one forty two.
One forty-two.
Second position. I think he's a valuable position. I think he's really good at what he does. I would like to recommend that we move him to thirty-nine thousand dollars personally. That's only a little bit, another twelve hundred bucks, but Val is really, you know, my personal opinion is a very huge asset to this. And I, he started out at about twenty-four thousand. We've been trying to get him to where he needs to be. And at that rate, he'll be making about fifteen bucks an hour, fourteen ninety-nine an hour at that rate, you know?
Talking about Val?
Val. But I mean, I don't know how y'all feel about that.
Let, let, let me say this, okay? Those guys along with, we've been doing lots and lots of repairs with community service workers, working with Ricky Baker. And we've saved a bunch of money. I've got these three, uh, one college and two high schools to, to help us this year. And we're doing a lot of maintenance and stuff, but we're not having to hire out. And so, but if you wanna do that, I didn't propose anything on that, but I have. I gotta look at it, make sure. I got thirty-two hundred out of my salary that I'm returning to the county. And if you wanna use that on James or, uh, my two maintenance people take care of the buildings too. So if you wanna split some of that between all four of them, I don't have a problem.
You know, the two bottom ones, I didn't have a problem with just because they are kinda, you know.
There's the lowest paid people.
Part-time, you know, that's them kids.
Oh, one forty-two.
Uh, one forty-two. I think they're, are they high school and some of them? Are they full-time?
Oh, no, I got two high schools.
No, no, no. That's Irma and, and uh.
Okay, th- those guys are not in here, they're not a part-time.
No, those are part-timers. These are full-timers.
So that's not Val?
No, okay.
Yeah, that is Val.
That's why those.
But the bottom two.
Let me clear that for.
The bottom two are here.
That's Nina, Nina, who cleans the annex.
I got you.
And um Irma, who cleans the corridor.
And Irma is over the court. Yeah, those are full-time at court.
Yes.
The three guys are out of my part-time budget.
Well, yeah.
So I'm not asking about them, I'm just letting y'all know that we're getting a bunch of projects, we're saving several thousand dollars.
I agree, but I know that that particular man can do. I mean, I think he's about as valuable as they come. I mean, he's a good hand. I'd like to have him for myself. And, and we'd come down and present one, but he wants to stay here. So, cause he's an air conditioning, hydraulic man, mechanic, that boogeyman, he, he's a good hand.
I don't wanna change, I don't wanna change the overall budget because of that. So if you wanna take the, what I'm donating back to the county and use that, it doesn't change the budget.
It's up to you, once that, just like seeing him get a little help.
We did that last year, right?
We did it on James, yeah.
And if you wanna, you wanna split it between the two of them or whatever you wanna do, I don't, I don't, it don't matter.
I think you split it between the two of them.
Does it put him to that thirty-nine? Let's do that then, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, I said split them to those two.
Thirty-two? Thirty-two, split between the two?
Is that right?
You didn't plug that number in anywhere else, did you, Judge?
No. No.
And I said sixteen hundred.
I really wasn't proposing to do that.
Sixteen hundred.
I looked on some of the second, uh, I think.
Oh, right.
I was trying not, I tried to be kinda cautious about my own people. Cause I, I'm looking at everybody.
Yes.
All two hundred twenty-eight of them. Y'all wanna do it, I'm gonna, I'll probably abstain, but if y'all wanna do it, I'll. But they're saving some money.
It'll give him thirty-nine four, he'll be in.
Just make it.
If you split it.
Okay.
That'll make it, he'll be thirty-nine four.
What you're making is thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine four.
James.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
It'll be thirty-nine four twenty-eight. And James at what?
Forty-two, eight hundred. Yeah, forty-two eight hundred.
Yeah, forty-two eight. That'll keep him right there in that management position.
Well, he's not my biggest legislative clerk, so.
Some of the clerks, me?
No, what I said, we raised all the clerks to thirty-nine.
Yeah, thirty-nine.
Some of these people are way under that, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, if you wanna make. Make him thirty-nine.
Get about six hundred more dollars coming up.
Well, that'd be.
I mean, you could take the four hundred from him, give it to one of them other ones and bring it up.
Well, I, I'd like, I mean, there's, I'd like to make that thirty-seven six just be, I can't, we can't go up to the thirty-nine with my, with what I'm giving back. We could make that one thirty-eight and the other one thirty-six. And then the rest go, add since we did James last year, we can do the rest of it to James. I'd like to kinda keep it even amounts.
Okay, whatever you decide.
All right, can we just, we'll put Val at thirty-nine and then uh. Get that bottom, I think that's a. I think that's Irma is the bottom. Thirty-seven cents.
I think so.
And so, so put Nina, Nina is uh. And so, so, put Nina, Nina is, uh, at least thirty-six, can we just figure this out?
Yeah.
And bring it back, is that right?
Yeah, and where'd you gonna put Irma at, thirty-eight?
Thirty-six.
No, that was, uh-
Get Irma up to, uh, thirty-eight, and then bring the other one up, so.
Thirty-six?
Yeah. Can we just make that, do that on, uh, the twelve or something?
Yes.
Alright.
So not do anything to that, on that?
No.
Well, change the numbers on.
Before we leave, let's, if you can figure out a way to split that, make, kinda make it.
You can just take some more away from James, or whatever, I don't know how you wanna do it, so, however you say.
Oh, um, actually, um, Irma is the second position.
That's what I was thinking, seven, thirty-seven, six.
The second, yeah, no.
Oh, she's number?
No, she's the second position listed, um. Val is- Val is the bottom position.
Where is it?
Val's the bottom.
Val's thirty-seven, six.
Val is thirty-six, four.
See, I knew it was, I didn't know where he's at, I thought he was under James.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong column, okay? I'm looking already with the twelve hundred, I'm looking over the right.
Yeah, but, yeah, but the twelve hundred, is, he gonna get that?
Right.
Is this Val? And not the?
Nope.
Thirty-seven, six.
No, Irma.
That's Irma?
Yes, um, if memory serves, that was a position created a few years ago.
I just figured he was right under, um-
So Irma is at the thirty-seven, eight, twenty-eight?
Yes.
And Val's at the thirty-seven, six hundred?
Yes, sir.
So that'd be fourteen hundred on Val. And then, is that, uh, that thirty-five, six, is that, uh?
Nina.
Nina?
Yes. So fourteen hundred on the bottom position?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's Val. That's what you said, so.
Yes, it is.
And four, can we do fourteen on the sec- that second one over?
Irma, mhm.
And that'd get her to thirty-seven?
Thirty-eight, something. She's already at thirty-seven.
Yeah, she's at thirty-seven, eight, twenty-eight.
She's already at thirty-seven, eight, twenty-eight already.
That'll put her over thirty-nine.
Oh, is that Irma, okay, I'm talking about Nina, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, Nina's at thirty-five.
Do fourteen there. And fourteen here, so it's twenty-eight.
Yeah, but you got thirty-five, forty-five, I mean, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-six, six.
So there's four hundred that we can add to, we can do four hundred to-
That puts her at thirty-seven.
That'll work.
What was the last one?
Four hundred goes to James.
Okay.
And fourteen into Nina, fourteen, Val, okay?
Fourteen to one, fourteen to the four hundred to the-
And that'll be the thirty-two.
I'll have to, I'll have to do that after the budget approved, on my letter, so that's-
Alright, I had another-
You wanna make a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
Four hundred to James, fourteen hundred to Nina, to get her to thirty-seven, and then-
Alright.
Fourteen hundred to Val, to get him to thirty-nine.
Alright, I'll make the motion for the courthouse maintenance to move Nina to fourteen hundred, uh, plus, you know, with her original raise, that'll bring her to thirty-seven. Val, the fourteen, to bring him up to the thirty-nine, and, uh, James' salary be increased by four hundred dollars.
Okay. Most by commiserate Jacob's second.
Second.
Second by commiserate Dixon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll say.
Alright.
So order.
Road and Bridge. I'd like to, within my budget, within my budget, one position to be changed, and I, you know, they will agree, that our foreman? Listen, boys.
Listen, go ahead, now.
Uh, our foreman's be moved to fifty-three, six, instead of the fifty-one, seven, and just coming out of my construction material, which, you know, we support these. But I would like to bring my foreman, uh, at a little separation between my men and my foreman, my men barely make what my foreman makes, and he runs the show, so. I'd like to take that out of there, if y'all would agree, we've set that years ago, y'all set the rates the same, I'd just like to move that, if y'all would consider.
How much you wanting to add?
Um.
What'd you say you wanted to go to?
Eighteen hundred. Eighteen hundred. Are all your forms the same?
Yes, sir, all them exactly the same. I think we set that, alright, you know, I might not, I struggle with hearing it. Yeah, and I'd just like to reset it, to start them out at fifty-three, six.
Well, yeah, I mean-
And, and they'll still get their, I mean, that's with, that's already with their raise included in there, you know what I'm saying, so.
Fifty-three.
Cause they were making fifty.
But, you could go up to that limit.
And then they were gonna make fifty-one, seven, and then, I got men that almost make as much as they-
I don't have no problem with that, we just gonna take it out of construction material?
Yes, sir.
Be eighteen hundred, forty-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Come out of each one of ours, to make it-
What was it, eighteen hundred, Val?
Eighteen hundred, forty-one dollars, forty-nine cents.
Is that gonna take care of all the FICA too?
No.
Just whatever it takes, other than that, let them just take it out.
Oh, that comes out of construction.
Whatever can need to come out of construction.
Just make them fifty-three.
So all the foremans will be fifty-three, six?
Fifty-six, and whatever's necessary, so it'll be somewhere around a couple thousand dollars apiece, you know, for the, whatever it is.
Insurance and all, I mean, the retirement.
Well, the insurance is there, but the, yeah.
Retirement.
Retirement and the social security and-
So you're saying put them, what about that, fifty-three, six?
Fifty-three, six, on their base hours, all four, if they agree.
Is all the FICA to go with it, out of road construction?
Yes, sir, out of road.
You got a motion you're making?
Yes, sir, motion.
You can bring, you can bring up seventeen thousand again, and-
I'll fix it to do that in a minute.
You can pass on that.
I'll fix it to do that in a minute, I think I, I got it out of there.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
You done a motion?
While he's not, yes, sir.
Alright, motion by commiserate Jacob, to increase all forms, all four precincts, uh, road and bridge to fifty-three, six, to include all the FICA, to go with it, uh, and that will come out of road construction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion by commiserate Jacob's second, by commiserate Dixon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll say, just like a girl mine, so.
Okay.
And then, uh, so order.
Yeah, that's all of that. Now, on the shop, Kenneth, that's your game, I was gonna ask you, would you consider the, uh, you know, kinda, you looking over that, I think Rashad really needs a mechanic today. So, you know, the money's still there, you know, the, the money for the shop positions are still there, so this, what we were talking about this morning, is what, twenty-five's gonna bring?
Yes.
But being that the money, you know, is still allotted into those positions that haven't been moved, I would like for the courts to approve for Rashad to go ahead and reach out, or you could just hire somebody because you're in that position now, but he needs a mechanic today.
I, I, I can, that, y'all actually can't take action on that for this budget, cause it's not on the agenda, but I can do it for Monday's court.
We'll do it on Monday's court.
No, we'll do it for Monday's court.
I can, um, do a budget amendment.
And, and- And he, and-
To move it to his budget and-
And then we'd like to-
Add, add the position as well.
Yeah, and we'd like to take, you know, possibly if they agree to it, ten thousand dollars of the existing, you know, operating cost, to set him up.
Okay.
Just a one-time deal, you'll set up, buy whatever tools you need, whatever, buy him a new truck, since he don't like the truck, and, uh, tax ass or collector's gonna take the truck, drive it first, personally.
Um, and so the position, uh-
The pieces, you know, they don't even run.
He gonna put a front bumper sticker in.
Do the-
I just threw it out there, the money there, y'all can sit down and, and decide and try to hire, you need a mechanic today. I know you got a makeshift, trying to makeshift to do it, but why wait four, five months to try to get somebody in place, and the money, you know, the, the money we're talking about moving, giving you the same position, you know, like what we were talking about.
Money just set moving.
Forty-seven, what year is it?
You'll have.
The position's funded.
Yes.
It's funded, it's funded, cause I've asked that question. I would, I would take that question.
Yeah, it's funded both, both positions are funded.
Work plan, and put it back into whatever you need to do, you know, far as, it'll enhance, but whatever.
Let it reduce the deficit. You talking about for next year?
He's talking about fishing, right now when we shut the shop down, there were six months of pay left in there for them two employees.
Yeah, you just-
Use one of them for the rest of the year, to hire him a mechanic.
We're gonna hire him a mechanic. Okay, alright, so that money's divided, for the rest of the year.
Yes. But the money that's left over, that you did all the division on, there's still money left in there for the operations, in other words, buying parcels, so we're gonna turn around and, he's, he's gonna take, if, uh, courts willing, I'd like to propose ten thousand, and he can buy him whatever he needs, he doesn't need the jack and stuff, we, we already beat their seven to death over that, but if he's doing what he likes to have, and he can buy him. But for him, getting the gain of the, the, every year getting that seventeen thousand whatever dollars, we, I think we agree, I don't know, we agreed pretty good to, I think that, that's, that'll just go back into decrease the deficit or to support the, and my idea wasn't that there's enough money there to support all of our, um, raises for our, uh, clerks. You know, it's-
It'll help for that, and maybe the cell phone or two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, whatever, it'll help, whatever's left in there, is actually gonna go into twenty-five, I'll, I'll put it into whatever it's better.
Yeah, I'm hoping, cause it's gonna give back money to the-
We gotta put that on the next agenda.
Well, not necessarily these types of things, that's right.
You gotta take seventeen thousand out now, I understand what you're saying, but that seventeen thousand will benefit those other salaries and-
Benefit the other salaries and the debt.
Cell phones and other requests that's needed, but, you may not be, you know, I'll give it up seven, but I understand what's going on, it helps out, plus I get a mechanic.
So let's do this, we'll put that on the agenda, for this budget, on the twelfth, okay?
Money.
On money, go ahead and hire him, and then move the ten thousand.
Yes.
Seventeen, can y'all just, can we just authorize Megan and I?
To remove the-
To work on the budget, to reduce some of the costs that we get added with the, with the raises?
Yes. Yes.
Is that okay? Everybody alright with that?
No, it's fine, man.
Shouldn't sit there trying, do the math?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we'll do that, okay? You think?
Um.
I know, uh, did, did he have any, Mr. Dixon, you good on the engine of healthcare?
Yes, I-
It was okay?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And then, um, okay, well, I had one other question, engine, two, um, and we passed, alright, sit down, man, he's just there. The engine of healthcare, I know we only have, what, twenty thousand sitting there for her, to use, Ms. Kathy?
Well, no, well, the twenty thousand, where's that?
It's for the county-
That's for crossroads.
Yes, crossroads, anybody go into-
They help reduce our energy.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and the rest of it's in the, is it in the sheriff's department now?
Uh, she has thirty thousand, I think, in her engine.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Yes, but I mean, we had, um-
And then there is an increment in there that she uses for the inmates.
Inmates that, that qualify for engine to help Kathy.
And where's that at?
That, that's charged to the jail budget.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to do.
Or in the jail budget.
That's in the jail budget.
But it, it's for the inmates that qualify for it, not like, you know, we're not treating folks off the road or something.
That's a whole separate line item that you still looking for.
But see, at one time, we had a-
At one time, it was all in-
We had an engine line item in the budget, two hundred thousand, right, and, and Judge Johnson took away, I think it was Ken, or someone, there was two hundred thousand.
Well, now, I'll tell you what the story was on that, okay? That was agreement in the lawsuit.
Yes, for that old hospital.
And, and what happened was, the doctors tried to buy the old hospital. They said if you don't, and I think it's, they were trying to offer four, four million or seven million, and a quarter of that, they said if you don't do it, we're gonna build a new hospital. So build a new hospital, lot of the equipment out, that hospital went to the new hospital, it went to some other clinics too, okay? There's a lawsuit over that part.
Yeah, that rehab one down there.
And for, for twenty, I think twenty years, they had, the hospital had to provide so much engine defense, for the sheriff's office and for the public.
Public.
It was a hundred thousand for each of them, it was the two hundred thousand every year, but finally, that twenty years, that's why it went away.
That's correct, now here's the second part to that question, when are we gonna actually have to fund a budget for that? Because we're gonna have to acknowledge that during budget time, just say, for instance, a new outfit come in, or just like Christmas is coming in now, with their ER hospital. Say they go back and talks, like they went to Palisine Regional Medical Center a few years ago, and tried to purchase it, before they come in and got all our doctors to make know you, but they didn't approve that. But if they would have, then the county would've been on hook for a true engine line item that we don't have there.
I understand if that comes up, then we just have to-
If that comes up, we would have to fund at least two hundred to, half a million.
Well. The thing about it is, a lot of stuff is Medicare, some of it's written off by the hospital.
That's correct.
I mean, they write stuff off all the time.
But truthfully, we still have to have that line item.
Maybe if that was the case, it'd be an emergency at that point.
And then we could still do it during emergencies.
We could increase the budget because it'd be an emergency.
But at this point, Kathy's doing a good job.
No, she's doing a great job, it's not knocking her.
We're not-
It's just with-
We're not behind on it.
The groundbreaking and everything that's going on, the growth of Anderson County, us as commissioners have to understand, we have to actually have a physical fund there, in case another healthcare institute come in and take over our hospital.
Well, we got, we got thirty thousand, we just have to do an emergency budget.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Jump up.
Wait, I, I have two more.
I think she's got two more, she's got two more.
Wait, I have two more, and it should be quick. Um, health insurance, we will not get the rates until the twenty-ninth, so it'll be after we adopt. So I don't know if y'all would want to adopt in September, or, hopefully we have enough money. I don't, I mean, I-
Wow, that's-
In September.
Yeah, that's not good, boys, but okay. Speaking of the health insurance, um, I think the county, um, which I've been talking to Megan about, and I asked her to make sure, she wants copy, I'll give all y'all some. We need to, uh, the county commissioners, it's not saying that she's gonna agree, or she's gonna do it, but we need to give her the option, which she can. But we need to ask the office's office, if they can, uh, go out and do more research on the new employee benefit trust. What that is, is new local code, it's two-two-two-point-zero-zero-two, it's a tax imposed on the annual, uh, impression on taxes, so basically, if there's insured, where they got a certain gross amount of premium, uh, it may be, uh, of the point zero eight seventy-five percent of the first four hundred and fifty thousand dollars taxable gross premiums paid to, like, say, for instance, we use Blue Cross Blue Shield to them, but out of that, one point seventy-five percent remaining taxable growth, which is pre-tax, can come back to the county and employee, and over the healthcare wise, we can get over a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars in savings from this trust and this new, that's set up for municipalities and governments, county governments and state and federal.
So essentially, they, they have sort of a rebate back to us.
Yes, sir, so, yes, sir, so the cog is opting to, the fourteen county region, we're in it, and, uh, we have Gallagher actually looking at it with, with them, but I think all municipalities that are huge are in it now, I don't know exactly what all counties have joined on it, but, but Tyler, Longview, all them are in it, and they're getting the savings. Yes, sir.
Well, she can look at it.
Yes, sir.
Um, do y'all wanna discuss the exempt employees again, or just leave it the way it is?
Discuss exempt from the market.
No, the, the two positions that are-
She's talking, oh, no, I just-
Just leave it the way it is?
She's talking about emergency management.
Yeah, I definitely understand, we're gonna, we have that position to the, to the voting, or, I mean, the voting position in the-
I think the way you did it, you just put it into salary overtime deals, that, we'll see.
See how it goes.
See how it goes, we got it covered, and we'll see what, how much time they do put in, whether it's, next year y'all need to bump it up.
Or, you know, we got the second position in that, uh, they should be able to start splitting some of their time up, and if we get the third position, maybe, if she takes, you know, the incentive to do some occasional jobs, get lighten cases load.
Yeah, so I think the way you present it, Judge, is where we move.
What if, so what about health insurance, y'all just, just hope for that?
Well, we got the, we got the-
Yeah, we'll just wait. Yeah, we'll just wait.
Well, we got the, we got the, we got the trust fund, some fund balance, but I don't wanna just deplete that either.
We do, but it, it might. No, but we might deplete it this year because, um, what the rates came back for this year, there was gonna be, you know, what's funded in the general fund wasn't enough. But, I mean, worst case scenario, if there's, um, in everyone's budget excess of people not taking insurance, I mean, we could pull from that if the, you know, officials approve it.
Okay.
I mean, those are options.
What's it costing now per employee?
Ten thousand eighty dollars, well, I mean, that's what we have budgeted, but it's actually more, a little bit more.
Last year, you had some extra e- estimated, so that covered part of it.
It was a little bit more. Yeah, um, cause in the budget, ten thousand eighty, but it's, it's a little bit more. So just leave it the way it is.
Right now, I guess, well, we adopted, maybe there'll be some number for it.
Okay. Twenty six, twenty eight, twenty nine, whatever that's actually, twenty nine, that's what they told us today, they emailed us back and said they won't be ready till the twenty ninth.
When will that happen?
Twenty six, unless you wanna go into September.
We'll have to go into September, we're waiting on health.
Is, is that the first, what day is it in September, any required by certain time?
The fifteenth, so it'd have to be on a regular meeting, so the only regular meeting is the, the.
Only one. First one?
First one in September.
Yep. They've been done twice, three times, the only one.
The night, the night.
Went to the first, September first meeting.
We shouldn't have to.
But if you wait for the healthcare season, you know.
Healthcare, see what the healthcare does.
That's just to tell you, fund balance there to hell, what you gonna have, how much stuff is gonna come out of, uh, deficit, and I, but I don't think at this point, I don't, I don't. Uh, quick question, clarity.
Well, okay, so all of the, all of the percentage it went up, do you know?
I believe it went up three percent last year, and the year before.
So for the next budget, budget workshop on the twelfth, you wanna figure out what three percent did actually? When you did this?
Weird, boy.
But clerk, clerk employees. I had a, I had a department head elected, it would be, yes, the thirty nine, they said clerks, but it mean any employee after the twelve hundred that did not hit thirty nine will be at thirty nine.
Right.
No, I, that's why I went through it.
So clerks only or?
It, it was the only, only the clerks, which were county clerks, district clerks, election, bell bond coordinator, and the SOO regular clerks, that was it. That's how I understood it.
Was that the interpretation of the court?
Sir.
That's interpretation of the court.
It was the clerk, it was all clerk.
Clerk, okay.
So it wasn't any assistants, basically?
Clerk. No, just clerk.
Clerk.
Just clerks, okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, I'm done.
Get down, alright, thank you. Alright, of course, of course, thanks, so we got.
Hurry.
Recruiting and retention in law enforcement is not just an Anderson County problem, it's, uh, it's an everywhere problem. If you've, uh, spent as much time talking to other folks in other, other precincts or counties as I do, uh, you'll realize it's a national problem. It had been my intention to come in here, and I've, I've talked a little bit to some of you individually, seeking a large, uh, adjustment to our pay to assist us with recruiting retention. But after sitting through yesterday and today, I, I see the challenges and issues we're facing as a county, and our responsibility as elected officials. I've kinda rethought my position on that, uh, instead of seeking, uh, a large increase that would've been six hundred thousand more or less, it would impact the budget and cost for, uh, uh, tax increase if y'all chose to do it, is, uh, the best way to address the recruiting retention for the personnel at the sheriff's office and make sure we can provide public safety is to utilize SB twenty two differently in the coming budget year, twenty twenty five, than we've used it in twenty twenty four, is what we would do is use that to fund fully, uh, some adjustments to the pay for the authorized personnel that are contained within the county budget, not any positions that we created out of SB twenty two in the current twenty twenty four budget. So we would be eliminating those positions, using those funds to fund raises for the county authorized positions. Nobody will lose their job, there are enough openings right now, recruiting and retention is such a challenge, we have a place for everybody and then some. Now, I've had, uh, my chief deputy work up the numbers, if y'all wanna talk about the numbers, but I first need to know if y'all can support that.
To allow you to use that.
To use that money, uh, that's earmarked by the, by the state.
Yeah.
To assist rural law enforcement in providing public, uh, safety in our communities.
Yeah, and then, and that's, that's found me, is that, this, is it gonna come every year, is that what they do?
I think he heard the same message from, from the, uh, governor's office at his conferences, I heard at my, at mine, is they are committed to refunding this in each session, they've made it part of the budget.
Yeah, so it's actually, you make a.
I, I'd already thought about this, because, uh, I mean, Allison did that for her offices, okay?
And I've visited with a lot of sheriffs across the state, and they have different opinions about it, but this, yes, sir.
And I've talked to different counties on how they do, uh, Houston County, they use the, uh, I, I talked to the judge briefly, I was trying to kinda check and see where we were at compared to some of the other counties, but, uh, they'd actually used Senate Bill twenty two to bring all of their people up with all, in other words, any kind of increment, certification, pay, whatever they had, that just got them all into forty five as deputies, forty as jailers. So they're still under us, but if we're gonna use, if we're gonna take advantage of it, then, yeah, we could, I, I say that we can take. I'm not sure that, we don't need to leave maybe one position in there or something, I don't know, I'm just saying, that way, if we left one position in there, if we have raises. Never mind, never mind, I'm just thinking, I, I wouldn't think you were gonna take every one of them out there, okay?
Yeah, I'd say, yes, how you wanna do it. Cause I'm not.
Because I was worried about this year, what was gonna cover the raises for those people in Senate Bill twenty two, but I learned from Megan we were okay, okay?
I, I believe the numbers worked out, um, the MHMR or access deputy that you added in the current budget, that's county funded. We wanna maintain that, we think having that field and available to the community is important, it's really important, uh, it's near, near to my heart. Uh, but filling all of the other authorized positions is, uh, gonna allow us to adequately address public safety in Anderson County. Right now, we are not able to recruit and retain, and I did the same thing you did, I've talked to a lot of other, uh, sheriffs in different locations, and some counties rejected it. So I don't know what their reasoning were, there's some rejected it, some used it for salaries, some used it for personnel, uh, some, uh, probably supplanted the budget and bought cars with it. Um, but in this county, I think we're doing everything we need to do otherwise, but we're not paying the rate we need to, to attract people in this county. I really don't care what they're doing in any surrounding county, in this county, uh, and I don't know if y'all are aware, Gurnee Unit is fixing to reopen. We've talked to the staff out there that are equipping it, so there's essentially five other entities recruiting against me for entry level employees. Cause everything at the sheriff's office starts with the county jail, and the salaries for other positions that are higher than that are keyed into that, that's the foundation that we build from. Well, right now, uh, three of the five units in this county qualifies maximum security, so, uh, you get more money working at max than you do at the other two units. Effective September first, a CO one with one day's experience will start higher than my deputies are paid on patrol. At ninety one days, they make what my sergeants on patrol make, and it just keeps going up from, from there. Uh, there's absolutely no incentive for those, those people to retain their employment at the sheriff's office, other than personal commitment. Financially, they'd be better off quitting and going to TDC.
If they wanted to expose themselves to that.
If they wanted to expose themselves, and it's not a bad job, I know lots of people out there, I'm lots of friends with TDC people, and, and, and I'm not, we regret to the mercy, it's a terrible job.
That's a different thing.
Uh, they pay them what they pay them because that's what the golden rate is. Uh, to be competitive in our market in this part of the state, I think we can use SB twenty two, where there's no rewards for leaving any money on the table. We can use it fully in the coming budget year, and we can get close to the numbers that I wanted to get to anyways.
Before you start the presentation, show me, what, what do you think about where we're at with the jailers? You know, we really made a big jump to forty, now we're at forty five thousand, you know, we're talking about a.
We're talking about a.
A graduate kid can come out making forty five thousand, or anybody, but deputies is what really concerns me, you know, because of, that seems like it's the hardest part for us to think.
Well, there's probably two things that have affected our ability to, to recruit and retain deputies, other than salary. Two, two things changed in twenty twenty four that really affected rural law enforcement, uh, was one is they repealed the state maximum on civil service. It used to be that you could not go and work for a civil service agency beyond a certain maximum age, they repealed that. So people that were qualified otherwise, in good health, seeking a career change or leaving the military and looking for public service, I, they could go work for Palestine Pity, now they can.
Yeah.
And why wouldn't they if they can pass their test qualifying and start at over ten thousand dollars a year more than I can pay?
Yeah, I understand.
They'd be a full notch in.
Well, I've only had this for a day, and I started, stayed up all night looking at it, but, you know, looking at all the, the dispatch and all, and looking at, I know, I know their responsibilities are, everybody's different, but I got clerks that are, you know, really, you know, involved in a lot of responsibilities as well, and I looked at their, their numbers and stuff, you know, everybody seems like they were somewhat fitted, you know, to where, like dispatch, and they're making forty one six, you know, and, uh, our jailers making the forty, um, I guess now the, where's it, next page? So they're making forty five six, and I've got, you know, I looked at all the different ones, and I just felt comfortable with a lot of the, the little things like the, uh, dispatch, or like the jailers, and I don't know much about some of the other, you know, what they, far as the sergeant positions were yet, but the deputies is what really mainly concerned me, because I feel like that was where biggest competition was. Cause I got road and bridge men that are, I mean, they're experts, they're, they're running maintainers and operators and, and, you know, we talking about certificate pay, I've got guys that have CBLs, it costs three to five thousand dollars to obtain, but we don't compensate them for that, I'm not talking about that, they need it, but, you know, these guys are pretty, and they're making the same money that, that you're, you know what I'm saying, your, your, your hands are making answering the phones or watching these people, but them deputies are out there working the street, I know it's a lot different, you know, atmosphere and the whole bit, they're out there, you know, in, in harm's way, and that's what concerns me, is that we get the deputy position up. And I just said that because I don't know how y'all gonna present this deal.
And I think what you're asking me is, are we, are we doing enough for, i- in this plan, is that, that?
Yeah, just, I mean, you, you're fixing to be in your field, you're gonna play out this, what you're gonna do, and, and I just hope that, that you see what I see on the deputy side of it, that's, you know, cause, uh, you know, I'm sitting here talking about the dispatcher, and I'm not, I, I love them, they're great, they're good to me, you know, what they do, but, you know, they're making forty one, forty two thousand, you know what I'm saying, and I've got clerks that are over here, we're struggling to make thirty nine, they're answering the phone, and I understand some of them have late hours and all, we all do that, but I don't, I just don't see they're out of line, is what I'm saying, I guess, you know, on some of the positions.
Well, the, the county judge mentioned, I think we have two hundred twenty eight, uh, total employees in the county, is that right, Judge?
Yeah, there's some, more or less.
More, more or less, more or less.
There might be one or two off, I don't wanna be cool with this too.
How many openings do we have? How many openings do we have in other places in the county?
Yeah, yeah, I only got a couple.
And they usually fill.
I only got ten positions though, you know, so I, that's twenty percent of mine is open, I guess.
Let's, let me, let me say something, okay?
Go ahead, please, Judge.
Alright, and, and you know, even before I took office, I was an advocate for raising the deputies and raising the jailers. And we, this, I, I, I'm talking about everybody on this court, I wasn't here when some of it happened, but I was here last year. And this court, for the, for the sheriff's department, has done more than any court that I've ever seen in the history of this county, to get the salaries up. And, and it's my opinion, we're a lot more competitive than we used to be, but, me saying that, Senate Bill twenty two was to enhance law enforcement salaries. That was the purpose, I just want them to understand, if we spread that money out between them, if it goes away for any reason, then it's gonna be in, it was easier to do the, the, the positions in there, because then you say, okay, you got eight positions, six jailers, transport officer, and, uh, animal control officer, right? That was easy to do, we did it last year, I can see where it might be beneficial to take that money and increase the salaries, okay? Because that's what it's for, that's what the legislature intended, so we've set the salaries now. If you, as the sheriff, wanna take that Senate Bill twenty two, and you're proposing to try to spread it out, then I think we oughta be able to do it.
Yeah, and I respect that a hundred percent, on where you decide to put it, I just want you to know my art before, that's where my big concern is, is with it, cause I see the others, and I don't know how you see it.
I, I mean, that's my opinion.
I, I.
I'm not sold on the budget a hundred percent, I got it yesterday, I've not went through line by line, I stayed up all night and still haven't got through, to see if I feel there's more money that I can find you, if that's possible.
I think y'all are at a challenge without going into yours, uh, you know, uh, fund surplus or deficient, this doesn't affect the bottom line of the budget, it doesn't require for any additional tax money, this rep, local tax money.
I, no, I respect that, yeah.
All government money is tax money.
But I haven't given up on it, you know what I'm saying, we a lot of times, we'll turn eight hundred, a million dollar year back.
And I appreciate it, I know you've done a lot, Judge Kenny pointed out several things, I, I've been here since nineteen ninety six, and I know what the courts have done in the past, and this court has treated the sheriff's office, forget the sheriff, I'm talking about the sheriff's office, it's an entity, very well, since, uh, I've been in office here. Uh, unfortunately, we're still behind the curve because we're not competitive for the market that I have to be in, cause of the special, unique things of Anderson County. Uh, the, the sheriff in Athens is not recruiting against five other detention, uh, officer employing entities, neither is Larry Smith over there, neither is the sheriff in New Bowie County or some, he may have one prison, I got five, so the whole SB twenty two, the judge hit it out of heart there, is to enhance rural law enforcement, make sure we can fill our positions adequately, be competitive, and provide public safety, and I think it's better served that way, because we thought the same as you did on the personnel, we thought that would, uh, work with us in twenty twenty four, we never filled our positions, um, so a position that's not filled is just imaginary.
That's right.
It doesn't do anything for public safety in Anderson County, I'm supposed to have four deputies a shift that y'all have authorized me, and right now, we struggle to manage two people per shift for a county that is fifty five times larger than the city of Palestine, and we're spread out, and it's not safe. And, uh, it bothers me to send people to work every day in a job when they're out there doing the things you just said.
Yeah, I know.
Um.
I just say we, I just say we take Senate Bill twenty two, and I support spreading that money out in your department, you can't use it for, well, we've made, we've met the criteria.
We have.
I think you could do that for the, I'm not sure you could create, you could create a position last year, I don't know if that money can go to a telecommunications.
We're not proposing that, Judge. We're not proposing that.
Okay, I'm just, we hear what you got, see what you got.
We're proposing, uh, addressing the licensed jailers and licensed peace officers, that we have the hardest time filling the positions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and I think that's.
Yeah.
What I was trying to get across earlier is, when I have a dispatch opening, how many, we got one opening now?
I have an opening, I've got three applicants in the queue, and I've got seven part-time applicants.
That are adequate, I, I mean, qualified, we're gonna get a good applicant out of that, when I have a, a, um, cler- clerical position, and I advertise it or post it, I get ten or fifteen applications, of which I, probably the top three, four, five would be great employees, we don't have enough jobs for all the good employees we might have. When I have a deputy's job, I get to, uh, and I post it on Facebook or somewhere else, I get messages, um, basically, um, making fun of this amount of salary that I'm offering.
The, uh, difference between the investigator and the, you know, the deputies or the sergeant patrols, I mean, the, the numbers are different, fifty two thousand with the new money, you know, down to the forty now, do, can they patrol the street, the ones that are making, I mean, can the, uh, I guess the chief deputy, which be, uh, Nick, you know, anybody, any of these, all the way down to sergeant, can they patrol the streets too?
As, as long as I, uh, as long as I have somebody else to do the job they're not doing.
I got you, I understand that, but I'm saying if we just.
And I've actually bailiffed court, and I've actually co- uh, done patrol shifts myself, as has he, as has he.
Yeah.
My captain on patrol right now is working midnight shifts to cover, because we're covering an entire shift with overtime right now on patrol, yes.
Yeah, I understand. But they make more money because of their responsibilities to what they do, more than the deputy.
They, they make more than deputies, like your foreman makes more than your roadman, uh, but he's got more things I need him to do than just that.
That's right.
I need to fill all my positions to provide public safety, but what we're proposing is SB twenty two to be divided up, like the judge said, amongst the commission personnel, so everybody gets an increase that I think puts them in a competitive zone for this part of the state of Texas, and will allow me to adequately address my needs at the sheriff's office.
Have you got a ready proposal?
Yeah, we've got some numbers.
I've got some numbers, we had to put them together quickly, cause we were coming in with something else, but.
That was gonna be my next question.
Um, but basically, um, we're proposing a raise of eighty four hundred dollars for, that's after the twelve hundred that the court's already authorized. Eighty four hundred dollars for each commission deputy, that'll put them at fifty eight thousand a year, which we feel like we can be competitive with. Um, the total cost for that is gonna be just under three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, and the reason I say just under is because I got with Megan this morning. and the reason I say just under is because I got with Megan this morning, and I had forgotten that SB twenty-two does not cover certificate pay or longevity pay.
No, it does do certificate pay, it doesn't do staff, longevity, health insurance, or overtime, I didn't, I didn't say the overtime.
Yeah, I knew about the overtime.
But those things are already in your budget.
But.
Yes.
Those things are already included. Um, so basically, uh, what we're gonna ask to do is take whatever, um, part of SB twenty-two equals eighty-four hundred dollars per deputy, commissioned deputy, and there are thirty-five of those, and take the rest of that and distribute it to the jail.
Just evenly?
To, to the commissioned jailers. So, we'll end up with exactly five hundred thousand dollars.
Confess it.
And that we won't have to worry about giving any back to the state, because we didn't use it all, or having to try to find another place to put it.
So do you include the taxes in the thing?
That was including the taxes in that three fifty-six, I just, I also included the staff and longevity.
Take them.
Can we get the numbers done and plugged into the Senate Bill budget? I mean, we got a budget that's in here, it's a special budget. Can we get that plugged in like what you're asking for, for the next, for the twelve?
Yes.
Because, and, and for y'all's information, I think I mentioned this yesterday, uh, about the audit, the audit structure.
You can come in.
We gotta show where the money's been used for this year, and then probably outline what is gonna be used for next year, uh, so that we do have a budget. So, can we do that for the twelve? If we had to vote on it, so we know what we're doing going into the first of the year.
Sure, will you be doing that, Megan, or do I need to do it?
Honestly, I would do it.
Okay.
I don't know what you would put in.
Uh, great.
You know, um, I don't necessarily know if, when you, from my understanding of Senate Bill twenty-two, if you create a position, it can cover the longevity, or no, it can't cover the, it can't cover the longevity in staff. It can cover the cert pay, and it will not cover the health insurance or overtime. But if you're giving someone extra money, I don't think it would cover, well, no, it, never mind.
I didn't say, the county is gonna see a savings, um, overall, of ten thousand eighty dollars for each one of those, um, eighty, eight positions that were created under SB twenty-two.
Right, right.
Maybe that can go back to the deputies.
So that's gonna go back to the general fund.
Okay, either that, or if you figure it out, you wanna put some of that in repairs, we could do that.
Yeah, we'd love to do that, if we take that and put it in repairs.
We can take one or two of them and
Yeah.
and prepare all of them.
And there's also the twelve hundred dollars that per each position that commissioners have already authorized to do, before we get a chance to speak. And we would love to be able to take that and add it in, and put that toward those, um, jailer salaries as well. That other eighty-eight hundred dollars.
I, I think there was a question, uh, there was a question a moment ago about, are the deputies gonna see something in every, everybody else? Yes. Everybody's already at a different pay rate, whether you're a deputy, a jailer, a jail sergeant, uh, uh, patrol supervisor, so on and so forth. And these are across the board relative to your position as it exists right now. But he'll work up the numbers.
I had no hands left, that's what they tell me, that we gonna work.
She'll, she'll do her thing.
I will get with the auditor, and we will get the numbers worked up.
But then, after listening to the challenges that we're facing, I think that's the best way that addresses our issues and the issues that the commissioners and the court are facing, in keeping this budget under control and allowing me to recruit and retain. I was telling the story earlier today, it's, it's everywhere. The city of Torrance, California just passed a four point six million dollar adjustment to their city budget, not to build a building, pave a road, or make a highway, just to recruiting and retention in law enforcement for the police department alone, four point six million dollar impact to their budget two weeks ago. This is everywhere. Torrance, Califor- California.
That's California.
Yeah, yeah, you'd have to cut it in half.
Nobody wants to work in law enforcement, I'm at a call, I ain't wanting to come to town.
Our, our levels of funding.
Well, the amount that that would be able to enhance it, I mean, like I said, I hadn't had time to even dig yet. And, uh, it's gonna be hard to find that kind of assistance in this budget, you know what I'm saying?
I know the sheriff will agree that
There's some looseness somewhere in this thing, I just gotta find it, you know what I'm saying, but it's not gonna ever work in things like that, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we didn't know, we didn't think y'all would be able to reach that without making big changes to the tax rate. And this, this doesn't affect these citizens anymore, it's not a law enforcement.
And I know the sheriff will agree, and I wanna make sure we're clear, it's not because we didn't need these positions that we're willing to give them up. It, those positions that we had, um, allocated under SB twenty-two are very much needed, but the sheriff's willing to make the trade, um, in this particular case, and will suffer for another year and try to, try to revisit the court about those jail positions and the other positions they were funded, and see if we can do something at that time. But realistically, yeah, I don't want anybody to think that it's not that those weren't absolutely needed and that, you know, they may, they will still be needed in the future at some point.
But it's, it's still hard to get the jailers?
Oh, yes. We got ten openings right now.
Okay, you said you're going up eighty-four hundred, is that, including the twelve on top of the twelve?
Yes, sir, it's including the twelve.
Okay.
Oh, it is including the twelve?
Yes, so that puts us at, um, that will put deputies at fifty-eight thousand even.
We considered the basis being what y'all talked about, made a, a motion and, and, uh, voted on this morning. So we built it from that base up.
That will put jailers somewhere between, when we add in the other, uh, pays that we talked about, that will put jailers somewhere between thirty-seven hundred and, um, four thousand dollar increase. And, um, that'll put them between forty-nine thousand, uh, three hundred and probably forty-nine thousand six hundred for the jailers. And we believe we can be very competitive at that rate. We were shooting for fifty and sixty, sixty for deputies and, uh, fifty for jailers, because we knew absolutely we could be competitive at that rate. But, um, you know, there's just not money there to sustain it.
The thing gets you pretty quick. I mean, all your, your, your long timers there is already making that, you know, the, from the, the, uh, step pay.
Sure.
So, already getting that three thousand dollar gain, that puts them over.
But we don't have any long timers.
Not here lately.
Not lately.
We got a whole bunch of toddlers.
That's why we don't spend a lot on, uh, step pay.
Which dang is it?
All right.
See, I'm gonna bring it back on to it.
Yes, sir.
Have the numbers.
Yes, sir.
The employees, if they're, if anybody's watching this, there, this has caused some rift in a lot of counties, because they're getting such an increase in salary. This is state funds, this is not county taxpayer fund. Essentially, we just set a budget, it was intended to enhance law enforcement, and that's just what it was done to do by, by our ladies like yourself.
And, and I'm glad you brought that up, Judge, I think somebody tried to hit on it a while ago and got lost in the confusion. There's the chance it might go away someday, and we realize that, so do, so do my employees, and it's not an action of this court, or any future court, that'll be taking anything out of their pocket, that's not your intent. Uh, and we understand that, and that'll be expressed to them, but right now, we, we need to use it this way, because we just don't have enough employees there, we can't, we can't attract them or keep them.
And how much is it, five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand.
No, it'll come at a different
Right now, I, I was trying to see where you're at. On the thirty, thirty, y'all, ten deputy short, ten jailers short, one dispatcher short.
It sounds about right.
Okay, but, if the grant goes away for the positions, then there's eight people, six jailers, that are funded out of Senate Bill twenty-two that will be moved back to the budget.
Yeah.
So that would make you only four vacancies in the jail. I, I just wanna be
Absolutely, Judge, but also
And then the same thing, the same thing, the two deputy positions that are in Senate Bill twenty-two will go back into the general fund. So if you're looking at the number of deputies, those grant deputies and the grant jailers will go away, and those positions will move back into the general fund. So that will reduce you down to being eight deputies short.
That's correct, now, what it does, though, is make those positions even more important, since we don't have the potential for the additional ones.
I understand.
Uh, if that makes any sense, so.
I understand.
It, it makes it harder for us to carry openings and still survive. We, we won't be able to have the luxury of having additional openings, we'll, we'll have to, uh, work aggressively to fill everything that we have and keep it filled. But we'll be better equipped to do that when we have the right tools to do it.
That is.
That's it, Judge, thank you.
Okay. I think we did pretty good today. Except our math problem. And I'll, you know,
That was y'all's fault, I didn't, I didn't take it. You checked.
Hey, we got through.
I got quack.
If there's nothing else. Megan, is there anything else we?
I don't have anything else.
I don't need it.
When we gonna meet again?
I gotta
Twelve Monday, that's our regular meeting.
And then we'll adjourn.
And then we can, what do you wanna do?
No.
Oh, I thought we would have, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
What we'll do is, we'll set, kinda hit the end, budget hearing, if we need recess, I, I, I put a possible recess and then budget workshop, if we get to do it before lunch, that's fine, we do.
Right, right.
And let, let me ask y'all, uh, do, do you wanna try to tentatively look at maybe the nineteenth or twentieth, if we need one other workshop? Or do y'all think we can get it done on the twenty?
Might.
We're pretty doggone close.
I had that time, Kenneth, I really, I need, I need some time.
Okay, well, we still got time to post it. I just was trying, for y'all's schedule.
The nineteenth
If we're gonna do another one.
Monday to Friday.
Yeah, I'm got surgery out with
What day?
Uh, Wednesday.
Will you be back by Monday, or no, the nineteenth?
I, I'll, I'll make, I don't care if I'm limping in here, I'll be in here by Monday or two.
What is?
I'd like to see kinda how I'm feeling right after surgery.
Yeah, let's set it for the morning, that's our two, you can immediately, we'll have it at nine.
Well, we gotta do it on Friday, so if y'all kind of tend to believe it, the nineteenth, Monday and Tuesday, the nineteenth
Yeah.
Open right now?
Yes.
Let me see how, I'll figure it out over the weekend. But, you know, just see how the surgery will be, and if I'm doing pretty good, it'll both, either day.
Or just decades, and like
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by committee, if you can do everything. Thanks, by committee.